Hi, it's called to order the regular meeting agenda for January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Here.
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 Here. Uh, salute to the flag. The notice of requirements for the open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of notice has been sent to After Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of the township clerk on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Emergency notice. There's emergency exit through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. No smoking is allowed. Uh, board policy, no new cases restarted after ten thirty P M. And no new testimony taken after eleven P M. Can we, can we change that now? Can we make that instead of ten thirty?
Eleven, twelve o'clock?
No, no, I was thinking about like eight thirty. All meetings will be videoed and audiotaped and shown on the township of Ocean Community Cable to channel, channel twenty-two and Verizon Files and channel seventy-seven on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off. If you need to make a call, please do uh, do so outside. Resolution memorializations. Continental Land Development LLC, block thirty-four, lot eight, sixteen, ten dash twenty, popular Ocean preliminary and final major site plan approval. Can I get a second?
Second. Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, case is carried to February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Alessandro Nacent Reschimento, block seventeen oh one. Did I get the right date? Twenty-seventh? Okay. Um, block seventeen dash uh, dot zero one, lot eight, one oh seven, Adams Avenue, Ocean. And uh, First French Speaking Baptist Church. Uh, block thirty-eight, lot seventy-one and seventy-two, twenty-seven ninety-five dash twenty-seven ninety-seven, Asbury Avenue, Ocean. Okay, uh, we're gonna do this ordinance. Jim, do you wanna uh, do you wanna read your little thing?
Yeah, hold on one minute. There we go. Thank you, sir. Okay, that's ordinance twenty-four oh seven modifies the land development ordinance to, first of all, clarify the relationship between conditional use standards and general standards of the zone in which the conditional use is permitted. In summary, if the conditional use standard conflicts with the general standard, the conditional use standard applies. Otherwise, the general standards of the zone apply. To allow warehouses as conditionally permitted uses in the C-five zone, the board's charge here is to determine whether or not the change is consistent with the master plan and if not, any recommendations that the board may have. In this instance, both the C-five zone and the proposed use are not consistent with the master plan. Land use designation of the area occupied by the zone, which is general office. In this regard, it is important to know that the history, history of the C-five zone, it was created in nineteen ninety-four by ordinance eight sixteen eighty in response to changes in the character of the area and the demand for support facilities for the C-four zone. Aesthetics were also a primary concern. The planning board recognized that the creation of the C-five zone was not consistent with the master plan and also determined that it was consistent with the intent and purpose of the master plan. The township council adopted the ordinance by a five-zero vote and found that it was not consistent with the letter of the master plan but consistent with the intent and purpose. In nineteen ninety-seven, accessory warehouses were added as conditional uses in the C-five zone. The proposed ordinance change is in further response to changing conditions in the immediate area of the site and changing demand and, and changing demand, and in my opinion, are consistent with the intent and purpose of the master plan since it will provide space for support facilities for uses in the C-four zone. And the board did have, we had some discussions about this. One point I do wanna make is there was a concern that there were other lots in the zone that may actually qualify for this and there aren't any. Um, there's a lot directly across the street and that lot can't be subdivided because it, without getting variances because the zone requires a three hundred and fifty foot, foot width and a three hundred and fifty foot depth. And that lot doesn't have sufficient depth. So if it was subdivided, it would create two non-conforming lots.
Okay, um, I, I, I would think that we all feel that it's uh, inconsistent with the master plan. When we say that first, we all agree with that? Do you have any, any, any other things that we would like to say? I'm leaning towards you, Ed, cause you.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just wanna add and I wanna, you know, reiterate that the existing use for the accessory warehouses is mixed use. It requires both retail and warehouse uses, which when reading through the C-five, the description, what kind of businesses are in there? And I understand the flexibility with commercial, that kind of mixed use I think is, is something that we should be supporting. I'm very concerned that not only across the state of New Jersey are warehouses popping up, but now we're seeing more warehouses happening in Ocean. Warehouses were never originally supposed to be included in this area, not in the C-five, which isn't consistent with the master plan, but even in the original, and Jim can fact check me here, but when it was originally just for office space, warehouses weren't a conditionally used or an accessory use either, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. So I don't think that we should be cramming warehouses into every nook and cranny of Ocean Township until we have a, a plan for how we're going to handle warehouses and what we're gonna be doing with them. There are examples of mixed use of retail, consistent with the retail uses that we've set in other zones in town that are consistent with the current law in the C-five. I think that a, a straight warehouse is not where we should be going with this and I think that the council should take some time and, and consider that. I mean, you know, as I understand that we're making their, a suggestion to them for their review and I think that we should have a, a bigger part of, a bigger conversation about warehouses before approving them piecemeal.
Do you have anything to add to Ed's concerns?
Well, I understand it's concern, but it is uh, you know, zoned for that very specific area, right there by Seville Square. Uh, the current property there is very industrial. It, it looks like it needs to be improved and I believe that this is something that could allow the planning board to then ultimately have the decision. If we get it to someone who's gonna be the new tenant there, we could actually make some improvements to the area. Uh, the parking is horrendous over there, so it's really not very conducive to the use it is right now. So I do believe inherently there is a benefit to the township in this particular case.
I, I agree with you. I, I'm sorry, Ed, but uh, you know, I mean, I think that that area there, especially if we're talking about, Jim, you're, we're only talking about this one parcel, correct?
It's, it really could only be done on this one parcel.
And then I'll just add then, if that's the case, then I think it's something that the zoning board would be better equipped to handle than for us making a macro change to the entire C-five.
And, and the only comment I would have there is that while, yes, it applies to the entire C-five, the only site that it could really apply to is this one site. And it's, it's better from a planning and zoning standpoint to approach something as a zoning ordinance change than to do it as a variance, cause that, when you start doing things by variance, that's when you start doing things piecemeal. And that's what the Medici case says in terms of uh, zoning boards just granting variances on a piecemeal basis all around. That's why you have to have, when you get a, a use variance, you have to have what's called a, help me out here, that's, that's the term we're looking for, the, the uh, reconciliation.
Yeah, you, they, yes, you have to do reconciliation with the zoning.
Reconciliation, yeah, with, with the master plan and the zoning ordinance as to why that use is not permitted. And that's very difficult to do for a use variance application in most instances.
Can I say something?
Of course you can say something.
So Ed, I'm a little, I'm a little confused.
It's gonna take a long time?
No, not that long, not that long. Four score and seven years ago. Ed, just, I'm a little confused of why you're, you, when you're opening your markets, you made it sound like that this was a, that this decision has a lot of legs to it in other places in the town. I'm, I guess I'm a little confused of why you, you kind of inferred that, if this only really relates to this. It, it's the, the general pattern that I think we're seeing because we haven't handled this through the master plan yet or through any kind of larger thing, that the council is, is looking at this and we're making changes to the zones. The last one was, Jim, I'm forgetting, was the C-three, the C-four on thirty-five for the?
Probably C-two.
It was, yeah, it was when we were for the self-storage unit, right? So we're seeing more of these come through as ordinances from council that are, are zoning changes, but they're not, it, it's part of a bigger issue and, and it's gonna continue to be a bigger issue. This is, this isn't the end of it. You know, our, our retail spaces are changing, our uses in town are changing. And I think, you know, part of our other conversations are, what is the big picture here? What is the big picture here? And, and I'm not sure that this, that, that the process we're going through with these ordinances for self-storage, mini warehouses, warehouses, when warehousing is such a big issue across the state right now that many municipalities are struggling with, that this is the best way to do it. And that's just my feeling on it.
So, so I, my question to you, Ed, is this, is that, uh, the C-five zone, you, you have an objection having warehouses there?
I like the current accessory warehouse use that is the mix of the retail and the warehouse. I would also be really amenable to the type of mixed-use warehouse retail that we have on thirty-five. It's the street warehouses.
Retail is dying. I, 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 I just don't, I don't see it. I, I really don't. I think the C-five zone has no problem supporting as many warehouses they could put in there, really. There's enough retail there already.
I disagree, but okay.
Alright, so we're, how do we say this, Mark?
You're gonna make a motion that you find it inconsistent with the master plan, but find it to be consistent with the intent and purpose of the master plan.
Just like they ruled in ninety-four?
Ninety-four, yeah.
Really? That's all we have to do? Does anyone else have an objection to that? No? Just, just Ed, just me.
So someone's gotta make that motion, someone will second it, we'll have a roll call.
I'll make a motion to say exactly what Mark Lexton said. That it's inconsistent with the master plan, but it is consistent with the intent and purpose.
Oh, plagiarizing nineteen ninety-four, however.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm not taking credit for it.
I'll second it.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Bobovic?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
So that can just be done by letter to council?
New case, uh, thirteen oh two, Edgewood LLC, block one twenty-three, lot eight, thirteen oh two, Edgewood Avenue, Ocean, R-dash-five. This is an application for minor subdivision to divide one seventeen thousand three hundred and seven square foot lot into two lots, eight, eighty-six eighty-five square foot and eighty-six eight, eighty-six twenty-two square, square foot with a necessary variance for lot width. When seventy-five is required and sixty is proposed. Mr. Tilton, I presume?
Yes, you, you presume correctly.
How are ya?
Good, very good.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
And to you.
Yes, you too.
I just told, before you start, let me just mark in the exhibits.
Okay.
Uh, exhibit A-one will be the survey of the property made by Mr. Samate dated July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit A-two is the minor subdivision plan, also by Mr. Samate, dated August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Then I have the following exhibits on behalf of the board. B-one will be the board engineer's report dated January fourth, twenty twenty-three. B-two will be the board planner's report dated January eleventh, twenty twenty-three. B-three is the fire marshal's report, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. B-four is going to be the crime prevention officer's report, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit B-five will be the traffic safety bureau report dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Those are all these exhibits.
Thank you. And before we begin the, um, I provided the legal notices to your secretary and I presume they're in good order.
They are.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, my name is Richard Tilton. I'm attorney in Allenhurst. I'm here this evening on behalf of thirteen oh two Edgewood LLC. It is a minor subdivision for property located at, interestingly, thirteen oh two Edgewood Avenue in the Wana Massa section of town. It's in the R-five zone and as you identified, it's seventeen thousand three hundred and seven square feet in size. It has a hundred and twenty feet of frontage along Edgewood. The rear of the property um, is contiguous with Deal Lake, so from the property facing east, you're, you're looking at Deal Lake. The um, application is quite simply to divide the property essentially into almost two equal lots with frontages of sixty feet each. Uh, the resulting square footage of the lots would be um, eight thousand six eighty-five for, for proposed lot eight point oh one and eight thousand six hundred and twenty-two square feet for proposed lot eight point oh two. The resulting lots are uh, in excess of the lot size required for the R-five zone. The applicant does seek variance relief for the lot widths, sixty feet or seventy-five feet are required. The subdivision plans were prepared by Mr. Sermont. They're dated uh, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. They're revised through August twen- I'm sorry, through October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Sermont seated to my left, if he could just be sworn.
Sir, do you swear in testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self to God?
Yes, I do.
I just state your name for the record?
Charles Sermont.
And you are?
Three oh one Main Street, Allenhurst.
And you're a licensed engineer state of New Jersey, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And Mr. Chair, I know that you've recognized Mr. Sermont before as a professional. I asked that his testimony be um, considered as such tonight.
Without objection.
Thank you. Um, check, if you will. I mean, it's a pretty straightforward application.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you just hang on for a second?
Sure.
Jim?
Yes.
Any objections?
Let me just swear in our experts. Do our experts both swear that any testimony they're gonna give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self and God?
I do.
Thank you both.
Yeah, um, now, as far as the subdivision itself goes, no, both of the lots are larger than the ordinance would permit in terms of area and the widths, where the variances are necessary for the widths. They're consistent with the lot widths for the lots on either side, as well as a number of other lot widths in the immediate area of the site. So I don't really have a problem with the subdivision itself. I have some confusion as far as what they're talking about as far as tree preservation. Cause they're seeking a waiver of the tree location and preservation plan, but then the plan shows a number of trees that are gonna be removed. Um, and when I look at that, if there's twelve trees gonna be removed, they'd either have to put twelve four-inch trees in, twenty-four, two and a half inch, or a donation of four thousand two hundred to the shade tree fund, according to the ordinance. And I know the board prefers actually having the trees on the site.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, they require three street trees total and there's done, proposed. And they also require three trees per lot and there's only a total of three trees, two on one lot, one on the other. So definitely we need some testimony as to what's gonna be done as far as tree replacement. One possibility is, as far as the tree replacement, to put it off until the site's gonna be developed if the board should approve the subdivision, but then there has to be some mechanism for a new property owner, if he's buying the site, to know that he's on the hook for tree replacement.
Uh, I wouldn't wanna do that.
Yeah, but the prob- the problem there, at the, the other side of that is, if you put the trees on the lot, it could impact the type of development that's gonna occur in the future. So you'd have to make sure you put those trees in a location where you're not gonna have a driveway, you're not gonna have a house or accessory structures. So it's, it's a double-edged sword. It's something for the board to consider what you wanna do. Um, and then the other, there's some improvements on adjacent lot seven that extend into the site. That needs to be discussed. It's not much, just a small encroachment, but it still needs to be discussed. Yeah.
Sure.
I wasn't, I don't, I'm, I should be by now familiar with your tree ordinance.
Yeah.
Uh, like for instance, those five trees running up the subtly populated.
Yes, yeah.
They're really tall.
They're tall, sprangly, evergreen trees. I, they're.
Kinda close to the neighbor's house.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, they should be removed, but the ordinance says if they're removed, they have to be replaced. Yeah, yeah. And, and I agree that those trees should come out, cause they're, they're a hazard. Especially since they're on the north side of that property to the south. And the house is fairly close to the property line and the prevailing winds or the major storms come out of the northeast. So if they go down, you can't tell they're going on that house.
Evergreens still do uh.
Yeah, evergreens, yeah, they count, yes, they do. Any tree that's six inches caliber or greater. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure of that.
Right.
But, but that's the, it's up to the board to decide what they, what they wanna do there as far as the tree replacement.
Yeah, the app- the applicant definitely intends to um, install trees after the houses are built on it. And just so the board knows, I, I see the word developer being used, like, the applicant actually is the end user for both of these lots. Thirteen oh two LLC is two couples, one, one's an existing, existing resident in, in Ocean Township that are developing these sites for themselves, just so the board is clear. And we, I totally have no problem adhering to the, obviously to the tree ordinance to either installing the trees or contribution in lieu of installation of trees. Clearly will comply with the shade tree requirement, to the extent that there's some concern about how will this be addressed. I, I, I think we can put something in the subdivision deeds, cause hopefully if we intend to perfect by minor subdivision deed. I think I've seen that before. Or can we make this a bondable item? Cause there's gonna be, we're also installing.
That might be a, maybe make it a bondable item that the trees have to be put in at a certain point in time.
Cause we have to do sidewalk and curbs anyway.
I'd have no problem with that.
I defer to the, the experts on either side of me to that issue though.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, what, uh, why don't I tell you about my report and that might help you with your decision here?
That would be great.
Uh, so I have a couple uh, minor things um, that, uh, so what we have here is a subdivision plan with no proposed improvements. Uh, a lot grading plan or a plot plan will be required to be submitted to the township engineer at the time of building permits for each individual lot. The, uh, they're, they're, the curb and sidewalk in front of the, the site is in poor condition, uh, to say the least. And, and with construction of, of new homes, they're gonna have to be uh, reconstructed and, and redone anyway. So I, I was going to suggest that a condition of the approval would be that at the time of uh, the, the plot plans or the grading plans, that a new curb and sidewalk would be um, proposed. And I imagine a similar type condition could be imposed for, for trees.
Okay.
Right, and we'd agree to that.
Okay. Yeah, our, we don't, I, well, I should say, I, I, in years past, we would, uh, this board allowed people to make contributions. We've, we've kinda gone away from that. We don't, we want the trees replaced, so. So I would have, uh, I'd be in favor of making some type of conditions if we approved your subdivision. Does anyone else from the board have any questions?
I, I just have a, a quite back to trees, just add it, and, and Bennett, this is probably for you to just clarify. So the back end of this, these properties, the ones that are closest to the lake, there's one tree that looks like where this grade drops off down towards the lake to be removed. Is that an embankment that goes down to water? Is there a, is there a wall there?
Yeah, there's a, there's a wall right before you get to the, the edge of the lake.
Okay.
It's, it's shown as uh, elevation five to six. Um, and then, you know, the lake is at zero. It fluctuates, it's titled zero to one.
Right, but there's, but it's not, it, the, there's no shoreline there, right? There's just the wall.
Yeah, it's not like a beach or anything.
Gotcha.
It's a wall, like a bulkhead.
Okay.
Uh, before the, the war.
Yeah, it looks like there's a deck in a concrete area down at the base of the wall.
Yeah.
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 Anyone else have any questions?
I just got a quick question. So as far as this deck goes, is this a shared type of entity? Is there repairing rights? Is there anything that's complicated about that?
It's of the, when you say the deck, you mean like the, the, like, yeah, the dock and the?
Yeah, the dock, I'm sorry.
That would all go to lot, uh, proposed lot eight point oh one. So the, the subdivision line basically eclipses, so the, the dock is totally on the north side of the property. So the subtly proposed lot eight point oh two, it, it doesn't have a dock. Just that, there's just a bulkhead there and that's what's gonna remain.
Alright, that won't cause any problems down the road when they split the property in half and?
Nope.
Okay.
Shouldn't. Unless they're not invited to a party or something, other than that, I, there shouldn't be a problem. Mr. Chair, can I go back to the trees a second?
Sure.
I thought, I heard, I just wanna make sure you didn't say all the trees have to be put in versus a combination. I think Mr. Higgins and the ordinance contemplate if it could be a combination. The applicant does intend to plant trees. I just don't know whether we're gonna be able to get twelve new trees cause we're removing twelve, plus another three. I mean, that's a lot of trees to be, to go on.
Well, the, the street trees and the, the other three trees per lot count towards the tree.
Okay, well, we'll put those in.
That's not double counting.
Right.
The board has required in the past that all of the trees be replaced, if at all possible, be replaced on site.
We, all I can do is try, it's a guess, yeah. There, there, there's different caliber sizes though, right, Jim? That I'm allowed to put in? I'm allowed to put smaller ones in?
Two and a half inch, but you need t- or four inch.
Right.
Two, two and a half inch equals one four inch.
Right.
So if they do four inch, they do fewer trees.
Okay.
So the proposal is that they would have to bond for the trees and the trees are gonna be shown on the plot plan when they submit?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Subject to the review of the engineer and planner.
Excellent.
In, in conformance with the ordinance.
Right.
Now, where, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just so the board is aware, I just found actually one more variance that's being created, which I did not realize when I did my report. I don't think it's a major concern at all, but because of where the lot line is and the steps that go down to the dock, they have to be ten feet away from the property line and it's, it's very close to the property line, about a foot off. So that would be another variance. And again, it's an existing condition, it's just a result of where the subdivision.
So the rear yard setback is ten feet?
The side yard setback.
Side yard.
And rear yard too, and that, but that accesses the lake, so I guess it's a technical variance.
It is. So side and rear are ten feet, where they're only giving one foot?
One foot it looks like and, and no feet at the rear.
Put side, turn a foot, rear, okay.
And that's on lot eight oh one, Mark?
Yeah, that's eight oh one, yeah, eight oh one, yeah.
Okay, on eight oh one, okay. And then what about the encroachment for lot, from lot seven?
The, um, from lot seven, just so everyone knows, it, those are brick, they're brick pavers that will pick up.
Yeah, yeah.
It looked like there's a, yeah, there's like a landscape, there's like bushes and it looks like the neighbors maybe just go back and forth between each other's lots. It's just, we'll, we'll pick them up.
So that we remove?
Yes.
Okay. And that'll be a condition? That's all I know.
Re-conditions.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else have anything else? Go ahead.
I mean, I don't wanna deprive you of Ms. Caphone's testimony, but I don't know that it's necessary.
No, I don't think it's necessary.
This would have been the best testimony I've ever heard her give.
If you can just say you agree, Mr. Higgins, then. I let me swear you in. Ms. Caphone, do you swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self and God?
Yes, I do.
I just state your name for the record?
Ms. Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Caphone, C-O-F, as in Frank, O-N-E. Business address is one twenty-five Half Mile Road, Suite two hundred, Red Bank, New Jersey.
And you are a licensed planner, state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am, practicing.
Alright, so I'm just gonna ask you the one question. Uh, Mr. Higgins has already testified. He is the board's planner. Do you agree with everything that he said?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I don't know if the board needs to hear anything else. It would just be repetitive testimony.
Do not need to hear anything else. Thank you very much.
I do have one question for Ms. Caphone. Is your dad still working?
He's not.
He's not, so he didn't do any of the playoff games then?
He did not, he went to the playoff games and he is officially retired. He did not, he went to the playoff games, and he is officially retired from the NFL. My dad's an NFL official.
Oh, that's wonderful.
I didn't know that.
Yes, he has two giant Super Bowl rings. I tell him all the time, I'm gonna sell him for another Cartier love ring.
Okay.
And we'll note for the record, there is no one here from the public on this application.
Right. So we can close the hearing? And I make a motion to approve the subdivision based on the three conditions. You wanna read the conditions out again?
The conditions were with the trees, they're gonna be bonded, they're gonna be bonded, and they will be placed upon the plot pan, plot plan. The curb and sidewalk will be installed and, I'm sorry, will be placed upon the plot plan, will have to be done. What was the third condition?
Removal of the.
Oh, the removal of the encroachment, right, yeah.
Also, the the street trees will be put in.
Yes, of course.
Right, that's gonna be part of the, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to comply with the ordinance. Yep, got that.
Okay. And I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
I make uh, all in favor of closing the meeting?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay.